For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of June 17th, 2019. Call the order, please.
Hess.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noach is excused. And Walagura?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes from regular enclosed sessions of June 3rd, 2019, and the special meeting on June 6th, 2019. Any changes or issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. The only difference tonight is if you're here for either of the public hearings on Brownfield, please wait until we open that for public discussion. Otherwise, please come up. Tonight's consent agenda is A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $382,291.96; B, as a noise variance in alley closures until midnight on July 4th, July 20th, August 3rd, and August 17th, 2019, for events organized by the Fresh Pallet; and C, as a budget amendment request to increase the ambulance billing expenditure by $17,000.
I move we approve a consent agenda as printed.
Second. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Walagura?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first one is presentation of the syringe service program, excuse me, by Joshua Meyerson, M.D., and Jessica Leterant, R.N., of the District Health Department, number four. Please come up.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today. One thing, before I get started on this, I wanted to thank you all for your actions in passing the ordinance on the small free parks and beaches in the central county. We're setting an example for other towns across the state, certainly northern Michigan, and I appreciate your efforts on that. Did you have a, you had a presentation for me? Or do I just do it?
I think it's fine.
Oh. Thought I had given you a PowerPoint note.
Yeah. I thought I forwarded that onto Steve.
I have it on. Why didn't I put it at home? If you can do that. But what we're here to talk about is, sure, is syringe service programs. And I don't know if you guys are all aware about, you know, in general, the opioid epidemic and the harms that come from injection drug use, not just opioids, but all sorts of different drugs, especially methamphetamine is common here in northern Michigan. And the harms from that, there we go, is, you know, there's a lot of different harms, obviously overdose, but also the transmission of infectious diseases such as hepatitis C and HIV. So that's what we're here to give you a little presentation and education about. And if I'm going too fast, I know you've got a lot going on today, slow me down, but if I'm going too slow, you can tell me to pick up the pace, too. So the opioid epidemic, and I'm sorry, I'm the medical director of the health department, and Jessica is an R.N. who's going to be leading our harm reduction program, which is a grant-funded program here at District 4. So we know that opioid epidemic is a real issue, and it's an issue nationally, but certainly we're not immune to that here, and we've had people who have suffered a lot of health consequences and unfortunately overdose deaths and infections from their substance use disorder. Hepatitis C is a virus that you get generally, almost 85% or more new cases in young adults are from injection drug use, from using illicit drugs. And hepatitis C is a chronic infection which can lead to cirrhosis and liver cancer and death. And every year, 15,000 people die from that. And again, injection drug use is the most important risk factor for that. It's a very easy virus to get transmitted, you know, minuscule microscopic amounts of blood can transmit that virus. Injection drug use trends are, you know, have been going up, we talked about that, it's an epidemic. And it's not just opioids, but also methamphetamine use, which is a concern because methamphetamine users in general have to inject multiple times a day, five, six times a day, rather than just once or twice, so they're using a lot more needles. The CDC looked at a study and they did a study to say, what counties are most at risk? Not based on numbers, obviously, it's rural, but rates, you know, incidence rates, you know, based on the percentage of the population. You can see that Appalachian part of the central states are at high rates, but you can see northeast Michigan lit up and had some of the highest rates in the country, unfortunately, with 220 counties at highest risk. Michigan had 11, and that included most of our area. So this is a heat map, and this is, this is cases of hepatitis C that were reported over the last three years. And this is in young adults, so these are almost all from injection drug use. And you can see, you know, the two most populous areas in our health department are Chaboyden and Alpena, so those are the areas that have the biggest numbers. And, you know, it's, you know, it's hard to look at because you don't want to deal with that sometimes, but that's our little bullseye there is pretty much where we're standing today. And those numbers are going up every year, and that concerns me because the thing with hepatitis C, HIV, we don't have much HIV here, but the concern is, is a single case of HIV in this group of people who are sharing needles would lead to a rapid epidemic, and that's happened before in other parts of the country. So substance use disorder is very complex and very difficult, and there's a lot of issues, and there's a lot of things. Clearly, we want to work on prevention, we want to keep people from using drugs, and this program isn't about substituting for those. Those are important, and we want to do that, and we want to prevent drug use for sure. And that's a multifaceted approach with law enforcement and doing their job and all the programs we do to try to empower our youth, and all of those programs are important. And when they do have substance use problems, we want to have treatment available for them, and we know that's a whole nother issue. What we're talking about today is that middle of the pyramid, the harm reduction, and that is offering services to people basically where they're at that may not be ready for treatment. And we know that addiction is a difficult thing. It's easy to say, quit smoking, but it takes, it's a progression, it takes time, and you have to meet people where they're at. So harm reduction is a set of strategies aimed at reducing the negative consequences associated with drug use. And it recognizes that whether we like it or not, drug use is a part of our world, and we have people from all walks of life who find themselves dependent on these drugs. And we want to try to meet them where they're at and help them in any way we can to minimize the risks to their health, which will open those doors so that they can start on that pathway to recovery, which is a long and difficult pathway. And that really, drug users themselves are the people that can, that can take the steps needed. No one, no one can do it for them. So what's, what's syringe service programs, your needle exchange? I think one thing that's important I want you to know is that needle exchange is not just, and I'll be honest, I, when I first heard it, I just assumed it was like people passing out syringes on the street. That is not what needle exchanges are. It is not just about passing out clean needles. It's actually, one, it's an exchange, you want to get those dirty needles off the street, and that's important, we'll talk about that. But it's also opening that door to people with substance use disorders and asking, you know, asking them if they're ready, you can give them referrals for treatment for their substance use disorder. You can test them for HIV and hepatitis C. Hepatitis C is very treatable now. You can offer them vaccination against other things like hepatitis A and hepatitis B that they're at risk for. You can take back any medications they may have to get those off the street. You can also offer them Noxim, Narcan, the reversal agent that they can use on, you know, that their loved ones can use on them, or they can use on other people to help prevent overdose deaths. There is a, in the state, there's a state paraphernalia law and that does not, you know, that makes possession of syringes illegal for that, but there's an exception. So under F there, you know, I can just read, it just says, "An object sold, offered, or given away by a state or local government agency or a person authorized by that agency to prevent the transmission of infectious agents" is a valid exception to the state paraphernalia law. And I had our health board back in October of 2018, I gave the same presentation to our Board of Health, and they passed a resolution authorizing the health department to operate the syringe service program to express a purpose of preventing the transmission of infectious agents, because that's the legal precedent. I'm not an attorney, but that's my understanding of that. So that's where we're at. Some of the things I think I want everyone to know about syringe service programs, too, is that, you know, some things they do do, that they've been studied, they've been going on in lots of places, you know, not just the big cities, they're certainly in a lot of the big cities, and they're in Detroit, Grand Rapids, and Flint, but they're also now in Traverse City, and in Sault Ste. Marie, and in West Branch, and, you know, they're going to be starting up in, I think they're in Clare, or, you know, in central Michigan, and they're, they're going on in rural areas as well. And they've been studied quite a bit, and they have been shown, some of the things they have been shown to do is they actually help law enforcement and first responders, they reduce needle stick injuries because there's less dirty needles out there, and they're less prone to be hiding them or putting them places where, where they could cause an injury to someone who's either responding to a health issue or a legal issue. It reduces HIV infections since their implementation, they've seen a big reduce there. They have really helped decrease the number of improperly discarded syringes in towns and parks. It can help through testing for hepatitis C to save their lives in that regard. And people who use syringe service programs are five times more likely to enter drug treatments. And again, that's that opening that door to just kind of start them down that pathway to health. And an important thing is that people always think you're just encouraging drug use, you're going to hand out needles, you're just going to encourage them to use drugs. And that, that is probably the one thing that's been the most solidly studied and documented, is that they do not increase drug use. People who are at the point where they're injecting drugs are dependent on them. No one, I don't think there's anyone who just goes, "Oh, I got a syringe, I'm going to start shooting up drugs." That's just not how the pathway works. And having access to clean needles does not increase drug use in your town, so I think that's important, that's been studied a lot. That's my talk. You had some things to add. I wanted, you know, Jess has been working really hard, she has had outreach with lots and lots of people in our community, and she has a lot of people who's supporting this. She also, she has a lot of our agencies and people in your town who are saying, "We need this," that are asking her, "When are you going to start this program?"
Hi. Yeah, as you said, I've been doing a lot of community engagement with a bunch of key stakeholders of our community, and everyone thus far has been completely supportive. And I think what's important is they identify that Alpena, the City of Alpena, has a strong need for this program. I'm, to this day, I'm getting calls from community people asking if we're up and running because they have clients that are ready to come to our door. So like you said, I've been working very hard on this, and I'm excited to get it going, and I really do appreciate you guys having me today.
Thanks. I'm here because I want to educate you guys about what's going on here. We have a grant that started last fall. The state is coming through, it's coming through federal dollars, it's the same substance abuse and no health services administration is funding specifically to implement syringe service programs. And because we are a high-risk area, they gave us a grant to implement that, and we'd like to start that here in Alpena at our health department office. And one other thing, and your attorney might be able to help out with that, but my understanding is you have a local paraphernalia ordinance, so that if we were doing this program in our office, which is located in the city grounds, we would in theory be violating that ordinance, and we generally like to do things above the law at the health department. So I know there is some exception in that ordinance, I don't know if you're, I don't know the, I don't really know the legal, what would have to happen. I know many other cities have had the ordinance amended to simply exempt health departments or agencies working on their behalf for the purpose of preventing the transmission of infectious diseases, and they make an amendment. And if that's what's needed here, I guess I would be asking you all to have your attorney draft that. I know the City of Lansing has done it, and I think Meskeville has done it, I can get examples of exactly what that exemption was. They don't get rid of the ordinance, they simply exempt this program from it.
Okay. And you're, again, I'm sorry, but your expected startup of the program is this, is later this fall? Or immediately? I missed the, like, the startup date, when you would like to?
I have been working very hard, I'm ready to go, but like you said, we, we wanted to do it the right way. I would say September, October at the latest.
Yeah, it would be great if we could get going.
Okay. Because Bill would have to, have you read it?
I have, and I think the best course of action for the city would be to amend the ordinance so that there's no discrepancy at all as to what we intend to allow.
Okay.
I think that's the best way to do it.
And that, of course, would, would, considering that council would like to do, would like to allow them, the health department, to do that. I'm honestly not in a position to research whether I think it works or not, to be honest with you, your department, that's, that's what you do, that's your research. And obviously, the state did, so whether, whether it works or not, or whether it's a program or not, I don't know what my opinion is on that, but.
And I think, I think what you define work is, you know, it's not like it's magically going to cure the drug problem.
Right.
It doesn't do that, but it does, it does reduce and help reduce that risk factor for the prevention of an epidemic, so it can prevent an epidemic of HIV in your community, which would be, you know, a significant, you know, problem if we did suffer that. So it's looking at that, it's trying to decrease needle stick injuries, it's trying, it's just one part of many things that we need to do to address the epidemic here.
So I guess we would, first of all, thank you for your presentation, of course.
Thank you.
As far as council, and if there are questions for them, then that's fine, but I think as a council, we'll refer to legal counsel to, to bring us back an amendment. Is it just, is it a resolution that amends it?
We would just be amending the ordinance to provide that this would not be a violation of the city's paraphernalia law.
And, and then some, obviously, some discussion with law enforcement as well?
Correct.
To make sure that that presentation on our side comes back with any hesitation from legal counsel or, or the law enforcement?
Yeah, this isn't meant to interfere with what law enforcement does, obviously, they said possessing a syringe wouldn't be illegal, possessing drugs in a syringe would still be illegal, of course. And, and so it's really something you do in conjunction with law enforcement.
Right. And I'm right that, Chief, you don't, you don't, you have no comment at this time, you don't want to make an addressing?
I can't, sir, I don't, I don't think you're going to want that right now, but.
Okay. Yeah, why don't?
I have very strong feelings about this program, which I relate to the health department, and frankly, some of the accuracy of the study that's been presented tonight, I would dispute.
Okay.
Law enforcement, I would take issue with some of the things that were presented tonight, so all due respect. So yes, I would like, very much like, I'd like an opportunity to address this.
Okay. Very good. And our, when Bill comes back?
Whenever.
Immediately? I'll leave it up to you, certainly.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we will do that, and we'll take, accept the presentation, obviously, thank you, and then we'll table this to the next meeting, okay, with you?
That's fine, yeah.
Why don't we bring this on the agenda the next meeting? So that's July 1st, if you'd like to return it. And we'll address both the law enforcement's perspective and Bill's amendment at the same time.
Okay, so he could come up with some draft language?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes? All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you both.
Just to receive and file the presentation, and, well, I don't know if we can do that, he just presented, and we're going to bring back an ordinance to pursue it.
Yeah, so.
You haven't voted on, you just.
Yeah, so we're just verbally directing you to, I mean, I don't think it needs to vote, I think, so.
Sure.
Yeah. All right. Next up is a presentation of proposed Alpena County Library improvements and millage by Eric Magnus Eubank.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
For those that haven't, yeah, I'm Eric Magnus Eubank, Director of the Alpena County Georgia National Public Library, although most of you I know very well, and, you know, we consider ourselves to be good neighbors of the city, because we're so far away from, away from the world, though, of course, we're an entity of the county. But we did think that we would like to make the council aware of what our plans are should our millage proposal pass, and also give you the opportunity for questions. This will be an ongoing process, but one that we'll be looking forward to, and to the members of the media, I apologize for not being able to listen to the fourth or fifth time. So I have this slide just to point out, it is a renewing millage and not a brand-new millage, and it's something that, it's for us a renewal in two senses of the word. One, you know, the old millage is expiring, actually expired in December, and so we're replacing it with a new, a new one of the same amount. And the second point is that the library building itself is now roughly 45 years old, many of its systems are original, and like many facilities in Alpena and Alpena County, it's in need of renewal, too. So we're using, making use of both, both words for that, or both meanings. So we are asking for a 20-year renewal, which we grant is an exceptionally long period of time for a renewal at the rate of a quarter of a bill, which we expect to raise in the neighborhood of $231,000 per year. And the election date is this August. This was selected because when the board, library board went down this course of action, they wanted it on the earliest millage possible. And when the federal government shutdown happened in January, we're seeking financing from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, they were not answering emails, phone calls, or anything for a whole month, and that meant that we could not be on the May ballot with schools, which may not be the worst thing to have happened to us, but this, this August was the next one that we could get on. There, I've seen different things put forward, and of course, everyone's tax situation is This is a sample representative value, and actually, how we obtained it, we went through the last 150 sold listings on Reorder.com for, and came up with a median value of $82,250. The equalization office generally declines on that, but that's probably not very far off from a representative household. And for a typical situation, this quarter of a mill will amount to about $10.28, which the property owners already pay, since this is a renewal. We figure for most taxpayers, it will be somewhere between $9 and $12, which again, they're already paying. And the formal language, proposal to replace an existing millage which expires on December 1st, to levy one quarter of a mill to remodel, operate, furnish, and equip the library, and then because that millage has expired, a new one in the same amount is going on for a 20-year, a 20-year period, and we estimate that it will raise about $231,000 in the first year. So we have been at this for some time, and there are really three areas that we are focused on. Health and safety for everyone that uses the library, the library staff, the community as a whole. Accessibility, the library was built well before the Americans with Disability Act. And in addition, accessibility standards, when you have a community with our aging demographics, these are things that are good common sense and make for better service in using the library. And then better service in viewing with some of the constraints of the existing building. But I'm going to focus for now on the first three that you see under health, health and safety. The HVAC, our good friend, asbestos, and blind spots, and access control. So our problem stems from the original construction of the library, when the library board at that time, in an effort to save money, elected not to put air conditioning in the building at all, and thought that this would be a way of saving money, but put in an air handler in the system. And Roger Mendel, the original director, tells me that it took them about two weeks to realize this was a serious mistake. Over the years, the library has spent a considerable amount of money trying to correct the problem, but these have been things that are ineffectual. In short, we have a system that cannot control humidity at all, and we are pumping the equivalent of Lake Huron into the building every day that it's open, which is both, leads to health issues in terms of mold production and damage to property. It's actually bad in certain areas, that electronics will speak, computers will stop working, we actually have to take them out of the service areas, put them in a drier area, let them dry out, and hope that they will work. And we've actually seen rust on components inside circuit boards. This is my favorite one, but no reason we have already seen this one, so. In the fall, our vacuum cleaners stopped working, and a maintenance person pulled, you know, pulled it apart to see if he could fix it, and this is what he found. And the question is, guess how long this vacuum is? One year. That's rusted, it rusted out in one year inside the library, in basically one, not even two summers. We bought it at the end of one summer, and by the, by the next one, it rusted out. We are losing, basically, the system is destroying the public's property, and we feel it's our responsibility that we have to do what it takes to fix this. And we had started on a plan where we were going to install new equipment, basic, you know, the years are running together, but when we had an environmental assessment that determined that our ceilings were comprised of asbestos, and that we could not basically do much of anything until this was removed. And if you stop by the library, I'll give you a simple plan for how to detect asbestos. Walk in the first floor, look out, if it's white on the ceiling, it's asbestos. The entire, you know, right now, it's the entire first floor. We have already spent $100,000 remediating one, one section of the library, and we estimate that we have at least another, another $100,000 to go. And the problem with this is, if you'll notice, there are lights attached to the first stuff, and we have the nice little catch 22. And we have the nice little catch-22 of, we can't get to it without removing the lights. And we can't remove the lights without disturbing the asbestos. So, basically, we're in a position where everything we want to do, we have to do at once, which wasn't how we drew it up, but it's where we are, where we are now. And that's just what, you know, what a section looks like after you've gone through the problem. Basically, we've ruined, everything is stripped bare. Everything on the ceiling is done by, it's wet, you have to wet the content down, you have to scrape it out. And for that section, that's easy. For the first floor, we have to store seventeen tons of books. We have to move shelving, and it's a rather large piece of logistics that we would like to do once and once only. And I shared this with Joel, that this was coming, but we did the training a couple of years ago and for the city police, and they based the training on the last fifty calls from the library to the police. We have a, we have an excellent relationship with the police department. But I don't know where we are in the frequent customer list, but we, we're, I'm pretty sure we're not at the bottom. And this was just done based on what they had most recent. But suicidal subjects, people with mental illness, intoxicated subjects, alcohol and drugs. And when, the day I gave this presentation to the county commissioners, this, the state legislature just passed a bill that gives library workers immunity from administering Narcan to people who are overdosed. And I'm aware of at least some in the state where, you know, lives have been saved in the state because of that. We haven't had anything quite that serious. A lot of domestic disturbances, assaults, larcenies, a lot of like that. This is, this is one particular case that I can remember, and I believe this is when someone converts somebody else's automobile into their own personal property. And I think the situation actually turned out to be a possession, but. Criminal sexual conduct. We keep a very close eye on the sex offender registry. And one of the things we've done over the years is systematically reduce blind spots to try to reduce this. And we see the police are not in their infrequent making warrant to arrest. And this is just, you know, this is just a sample. And I don't want to give the impression that it's the Wild West. We can go months without anything at all happening. And then we can have five things happen on the same day or the same week, based on the phase of the moon or, or who knows, who knows what. But there are parts of our building that, the way the building was designed, were not, you know, it was built in a different time and a different age. And there are ways that this building can be made safer than it is now. So, what we're looking for with the USDA is to borrow around two-point-seven million for twenty years with an annual payment of about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. At this point, that's if this were held tomorrow. The, you know, the things may change around the edges by the time it is said and done, but that number has stayed pretty constant for about six months now. And with that, well, thank you for listening. I guess I'll to highlight some of the things that we are planning on doing. The, the key to fixing both the accessibility and the safety issues really are reconfiguring the entryways. And so, we're going to be closing the entry point on the Alpena, on the Armory side and redoing the entryway on the Alpena News side, and removing the central stairwell and moving our point of entry so that there is basically one way in, one way out, and we're right by it so that we can see everything. It gives us the space to keep our children's areas and teen areas separate from adult areas and adult computer areas, giving kids their own computers away from, away from adults. And it also gives us the space to do things that will make the library more accessible, more comfortable, and also more positive. There are things in here that will reduce our operating costs. So, that's the, that's the nutshell version. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
I don't have any, anyone?
Pretty good.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Yep. And again, I always appreciate the good neighbors in the city. This will be great.
Thank you.
All right, our final presentation is for the Longest Table Event, to be held on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Sonya is here.
Good evening, how is everyone today?
All right, thank you.
I am here to request your permission to use the pedestrian bridge near the Great Lakes Heritage, Maritime Heritage Trail. The United Way is spearheading an event called the Longest Table. It's a national program that has been very successful in other communities. I'm from Dayton, Ohio, I saw it in Dayton, and actually participated in it. And brought, brings people from different backgrounds across the city to, and encourages them to sit down and just talk about things that are important to them in the community. So, we have a number of sponsors. We're working with a group called Who's Your Neighbor? And we're also working with the DDA. We have the Alpena News that have signed on and others who are supporting this. So, it will be Sunday, August twenty-fifth, from three to five. It's a free community event, and what we're doing is setting up, we need a high-visibility area. This is how this works. And we're setting up tables. We'd like to set tables up on this bridge, and where people will come together and basically break bread and talk about issues that are important to Alpena. We're inviting a lot of our agencies to sit at the table, and we're gonna talk about issues ranging from substance abuse, suicide prevention, diversity and inclusion. It just, it's open. And then, from there, we hope to take those dialogues, those community dialogues, and take them to living rooms or other places throughout the city a couple of times a year to encourage conversation, find out what's important on the minds of people in Alpena. It's free, and if someone just happens to be walking across the bridge, they're welcome to have a seat at the table as well. So, I'm just here to ask for your permission to be able to use that bridge from three to five p.m. on Sunday, August twenty. Any questions?
We already emailed all the department heads.
Yes.
And there was no issues.
Didn't seem to be any issues from department heads. I did just bring up briefly with the Engineering Department, only because ordinarily, we, we have a clause on most of our bridges and areas that, that the general public is still allowed to pass them if they're going somewhere, but you just addressed that.
Yep, they can.
So, I don't have any issues at all. I did, we met once, and so I had kind of a heads-up. So, I've seen a couple of videos of what the Longest Table Events are, so they're very cool. I don't have any issues whatsoever, so.
Wonderful, so I can put the time down and the location so we can start our promotions.
Yeah, we're gonna vote real quick. Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we'll, if somebody wants to make a motion, then we allow that.
I guess, I guess I just have one question. Approximately, how long does the event last?
Two hours, three to five.
Three to five.
Oh, that's in here clearly, I'm sorry.
I move we approve the Longest Table Event on Sunday, August twenty-fifth, from three to five on the bridge.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
And House?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, and I encourage you all to have a seat at our table.
Thank you.
Get a meditation.
Thank you very much. Next, we have announcements. The dedication of the Thomas Stafford Dog Park is Friday, June twenty-first, that's this Friday, two thousand and eighteen, at five fifteen p.m. at North Riverfront Park on Fletcher Street.
And after the dedication of Dog Park, at five fifteen, is the unveiling of the dog statues that are going to be adjacent.
That's right. They follow.
Yeah, real briefly, the statues are supposed to be delivered Wednesday and installed down there. And today, the arch over the entryway was installed, so.
Awesome.
And the sign, also the sign will be installed Wednesday, so.
Okay.
The day is coming together for Friday.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All right, I have one proclamation this evening. This is for Amateur Radio Week. Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of human voice broadcast over the airways, and whereas amateur radio provides a platform to develop innovative technologies in communications, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between peoples, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community service, both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades, and whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated, and whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-athons, walk-athons, fairs, and other charitable events, public events. And whereas the City of Alpena recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn Program of the US Government Weather Bureau, and whereas the ARR-L Amateur Radio Field Day Exercise will take place on June twenty-second and twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, at the Alpena County Fairgrounds, and is an emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur's skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. So now, therefore, I'm Matthew J. Walgore. By the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Alpena to hereby proclaim June twenty-fifth through the twenty-third as Amateur Radio Week in the City of Alpena.
June fifteenth.
What?
June fifteenth through the twenty-third.
What did I say?
Twenty-fifth.
Well, all right. June fifteenth through the twenty-third is Amateur Radio Week. Thank you. And a couple of representatives from the Amateur Radio Association. We'll get a snack. If you would like it, I've got a couple of words. First, we'll go with the chief here, so we're all. Perfect.
Way to go.
That's right, over here, that's the Thursday. How good?
Yes.
If you want to know, yeah, sure.
My name is Dick Weel, this is Glenn Helving. Glenn's the President of our Thunderberry Amateur Radio Club, and I'm the Secretary. And Thunderberry Amateur Radio Club's been around since nineteen sixty-one, so it's not very long we'll have our sixtieth anniversary. So, it's been a long, ongoing thing. We just want to thank the Council, and the Mayor, and city officials for supporting amateur radio. You know, it's sometimes we're in the background and they don't really see a lot of us, but want to invite everybody to come by the fairgrounds sometime after two this Saturday. Just visit and see what we do, and we'll be there all night. If you want to come and join me too, we'll still be there. Anyway, we have a lot of fun, and we do have a lot of expertise to add to a lot of services. Amateur radio operators, from high school or grade school kids all the way up through people a hundred years old and any blocks of life, you know. They know people, they're Nobel laureates and senators and heads of state and so forth. So, it's a very diverse organization. So, thank you again for all that you've done to support us.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next up, we'll start our public hearing for AS the Brownfield Plant for City Hall located at two-oh-eight North First Avenue. I'll open that. Good evening, Greg. I'll open the public hearing and report by Planning and Development Director, Adam Paul.
Good evening, Mayor. On March twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, a small quantity of mercury was released in the basement of City Hall. Mercury is a hazardous chemical, and the city, city staff was notified, staff notified a qualified contractor to resolve the hazardous situation. For the safety of staff, the contractor was authorized to begin immediate abatement procedures and was eventually able to abate the mercury spill. As part of this process, a portion of the flooring was removed. And to restore the basement to its functional state, a separate contractor was brought in to install new flooring in the areas affected by the spill. Total cost of testing and abatement and restoring the building was just over forty-one thousand dollars. Insurance was able to cover ten thousand dollars. Therefore, the City of Alpena did request thirty-five thousand dollars from the local remediation fund to help cover the cost of cleanup and any potential penny bills that may remain. On June tenth, twenty nineteen, the Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment met and unanimously approved the enclosed Brownfield Plant, authorizing the use of up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the local remediation fund. Staff would ask that Council adopts the Enclosed Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, approving the Brownfield Plant.
Kind of went over that one several times. Any questions for Adam?
I have none. So, I'll move.
We're gonna, yeah, just, I got the resolution.
Are you gonna finish mine through your steps?
Oh.
You guys, there's a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just kinda, yeah, hold on, everything going on, sorry. Is there any public comment regarding the presentation that Adam just gave? Any written, any written comments? Did the clerk's office?
No.
Close the public hearing and then open it up for a council discussion.
Second.
Do, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Adam. Run this second and third way, try. Brownfield Plant for Property located at three-ten North Second Avenue. Open the public hearing with a report by Planning and Development Director, Adam.
Certainly, it was a busy Brownfield meeting. Target Alpena has requested the use of a local remediation fund for geotechnical engineering services for the property of three-ten North Second Avenue. Target acquired the property in two thousand and fifteen in conjunction with a city grant that was received to demolish the existing building. At the time, the Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment, AABR, approved a Brownfield Plan for forty-five thousand dollars for Phase One, Phase Two, environmental site assessments, as well as BEA and new care plan. Those funds were never, never utilized as the grant and, and the provided match paid for that work. The Phase Two that was conducted did reveal mild soil contamination, which qualifies this site as a facility. Target is now requesting up to eight thousand dollars from the local remediation fund for geotechnical engineering services to test soil density for potential development. Sites along the river have historically been filled with a range of material, including sawdust, which creates unstable soil conditions, confirming that soil conditions will allow for a potential developer to plan for the appropriate foundations. Again, on the June tenth meeting, AABR met and unanimously approved the enclosed Brownfield Plan, authorizing up to eight thousand dollars from the local remediation fund. Staff would ask that Council adopt Enclosed Resolution twenty nineteen dash eleven, approving the enclosed Brownfield Plant.
Thank you, Adam. Any open public comment on that topic? Any open public comment on that topic? Any written comments received by the Clerk's office?
No comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to a council discussion. There isn't any?
No.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward as well. Adopt a Resolution 1901?
I move readop Resolution 2019-11.
Second.
Walagora? House?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. We'll go down to unfinished business. A is the second reading of Ordinance 19-445, and that is the permit public displays of fireworks.
Consistent with council policy, I would not read this again unless somebody directs me to. So we just need a motion, and then discussion, and then vote if council satisfied with the drafted ordinance.
Just a comment. We received some comment, we got in the ordinance, and it was interesting because it was also brought up on my manager's listserv. Some people questioning it, the size, the required fines, and other things. And basically, everybody was doing it much in the same way as we were, adopting almost identical types of ordinances to be in compliance, so it's something that's been occurring throughout the state with the change.
I think that was the state government's whole idea in the first place. To make everybody kind of the same. So, and there were, obviously there were no changes since we read it last.
There are not, no.
Are you ready? I move readop Ordinance 19-445.
Second.
House?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Walagora? Motion carried.
Next item of unfinished business is bike parking in the downtown.
That's me. On March 18th, 2019, council was presented a proposal for the installation of two bicycle racks with shelters to be located adjacent to the DDA office on Chisholm Street, and at the soon-to-be-installed curb extension at the corner of Second Avenue and Carter Street. Council expressed concerns regarding the need for the bike shelters and their opposition to utilizing city funds to pay for them. During the discussion, I, a city manager and DDA board member, requested that even if council decides not to utilize city funds for the bike shelters, that it formally grant permission to the DDA to install the racks and shelters at these locations in the event the DDA decides to do so with its own funds. Such permission is needed as both locations are on city property. Ultimately, during the discussion, my request was never addressed, and the issue was tabled as then back to the DDA for further review. Since that meeting, there have been informal discussions among DDA board members regarding the bike rack shelter issue. Although the board has not taken formal action on whether to fully self-fund the two rack shelter structures, they would like council permission to place them at the two proposed locations in the event they decide to move forward on their own. Consequently, I respectfully request that council approve the two locations mentioned above. This will permit the DDA to move forward with this project utilizing DDA funds only if the board determines to do so. Thank you for your consideration.
I have no issue with allowing the two locations, and forgive me for not picking up on that when you were.
Oh, that's okay. I know there was a lot of discussion, and I didn't bring it up again either to ask, and it is kind of just slipped through the cracks, as it's fair.
I know that, Cindy, you had some.
Yeah, I don't think the one by the DDA building is the best spot for a bike rack.
Now, we do have in the budget, how much money did we put in it, 10? Four bicycle racks anywhere within the city.
10 or more.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, whatever. So, I mean, there is money if the council wants to put, you know, just bike racks somewhere else within the downtown, certainly it would be their prerogative to do. I would just suggest that that be coordinated with the DDA, since that's part of their role, but they can certainly do that. And there's, you know, with $10,000, if all we're doing is our bike racks, we'll be able to get quite a few bike racks for that.
I mean, I'm not going to vote no on it, I just don't think that that particular spot's the best spot for that bike rack. I mean, if you're trying to encourage people to park their bikes that should be in Culligan Plaza or somewhere closer to the center of downtown, that's just my personal opinion, but I will not vote no on this.
I'd definitely agree with you, I guess my only, is that we're gonna do a lot of, eventually, hopefully, a lot to Culligan Plaza, and so perhaps could move it once we remove some of it.
Or simply add another one. This is not gonna be, I would hope, the end of bicycle rack parking within the downtown. To me, it would be ideal, my initial idea was one or two larger facilities. That may be difficult simply because of space requirements to do that, so instead we may have more smaller ones.
Yeah. Yeah, so if no one's opposed to the two locations, let's pass, let's pass the locations and just try our best to keep some open dialogue with the DDA, and in the event they come up with a different bike rack plan that we may or may not want to fund.
Last time, we're hoping that maybe they would be before we better get, and look at that location, specific location, and think, maybe they would think too, maybe there's another better second spot, I think the Carter Street, the second, I think, I would love a degree of that could be a good spot, it's close, but it's still not right, etc. But yeah, it is next to their office, though, as I said, their office is not a place people visit very often, but it's still not too far from the downtown, so I'm not opposed to it, I just agree, I don't know, I think it's about choice, but I'm not gonna say no.
That's all right, man.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. So, I will reallow the DDA to put the bike racks in the two locations that are mentioned.
And Michelle.
And, yes.
Thank you.
There's no second, so.
So it dies.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Walagora? And House?
Yes.
Motion carried.
New business, installation of the security equipment at City Hall.
And before I do the memo, while I have no interest in Alpena Wireless Communication LLC or the company, I am good personal friends with Corey Lancaster, and so, I just want that out there.
Okay.
Over the past year, Mike Kalashevsky has been the primary lead on this, but as far as determining the installation of monitoring equipment throughout City Hall, this is access control, panic alarms, video surveillance, and fire alarm system. And he has, he's worked diligently on that, and I'll ask Mike to come up to answer any questions to me. He have, it's not, hasn't been an easy process, there's not a lot of companies out there that do this, Mike has talked to a number of them. But the difficulty has been getting an apples-to-apples comparison amongst the companies and the equipment they provide, as well as local support for what we utilize. Alpena County currently has a company under contract to provide video monitoring-related services with a local vendor, American Widget Company. We have renewed the contract with them several times, and have been satisfied with the company's performance. And to add to that, the city has also used this company in a number of different events. They put the surveillance cameras in at Starlight Beach, as a subcontractor to Todd Britton, same thing over at Trailhead, putting the surveillance cameras over there. The city has utilized the services of Corey Lancaster and the American Widget Company for our previous video related services. He has installed monitoring equipment at Starlight Beach, Trailhead, and the Public Safety Facility, with the city being very satisfied with the work, with his work, the equipment he installs, the end product. The cost of the above-listed upgrades, for the panic alarms, the video surveillance system, door and access control upgrades are $31,190. The city has $40,000 established in the 2019-20, 2020 budget for security and fire system upgrades. Thus, sufficient funding is available to start this project with the security upgrades. The fire alarm system upgrades will follow this project, and that is Worth Electric, he has those capabilities. Because of liability issues, there's not a lot of people that will get into the fire alarm system, like locally anyway, but they have, these two companies have worked together, and Worth would be the primary one, is my understanding, they're still getting prices together on the end. It is staff's recommendation, and City Council award the contract for security upgrades at the City Hall to American Widget Company for the above quoted prices. Again, Mike, do you have any comments? So, Rich was saying, you know, correcting the fact that we, I talked to different companies, and, you know, you can, you know, you go to Harbor Freight, buy a video surveillance system, and add some cameras to it. So we wanted to, number one, try to stay local with our business, so that we get local service, and I had really no clue how to write bid specs to figure out how we could do the apples-to-apples comparison. So I spent time over at the county buildings and went through, and looked at their security system and stuff, and was pretty impressed, and again, that's what Mr. Lancaster had installed there. There is high-definition cameras, essentially they all have Sony chips in them, the ones we're gonna be using are LTS as a brand name. The door security system are electronic latches at the doors, is what we're looking at, and it'll be employee card access, as well as being able to lock them down. Well, Corey has a company that they work with, and a third, we can't, our panic buttons can't go direct to central dispatch, we have to use a third-party dispatcher. And an incident that was given to me that happened there, there was a state police officer that was in the clerk's office, and thought he was reaching down to hit the button for the door access, and actually hit the panic alarm, and within 30 seconds, on his radio, it came across that there was something going on in the clerk's office, and he had to get on his radio immediately and call the fact that, so it's a quick response time. When we look at the door, you know, some of the things that were said when we look at the door electronic access is, there's windows on both sides and one big window, so the window could just easily be, you know, eliminated, and reach in and just manually unlock the panic bar. And we'll deal with that as we get down the road further, but the whole idea is, is we're gonna hear that window smash, we're gonna know that something's going on, and we've worked on secure areas where people can get to, and it'll buy time, because we anticipate if there ever should be an event, which we hope never there is, that it'll be a short-term event, and our law enforcement will be here in a timely manner. So, again, knowing that, you know, we've already seen what's being installed down at the county, we've already got, as Rich had mentioned, you know, we're essentially directly indirectly in a contract with Alpena Widget, we just felt that this was a direction to go, and while we're into the system, we're gonna be pulling the wires in for the fire alarm system, see where we end up, so there we're not disrupting City Hall over again for the fire alarm system, because it's, you know, the system is antiquated.
Okay. Yeah, the only question I brought up to Rich prior to the meeting, and he kind of deferred me to you because you had made a lot of the calls, was that, the other, and I understand that it was difficult to do the apples-to-apples and the bid process, but EPS in the, there's this very detail. Mr. Lancaster's email isn't very detailed, but that detail was, took place over the course of visits to the county, so you know that ours will be comparable, it just wasn't very detailed on what we received. But, but you have a communication and a contract with him that's more detailed, so you'll know.
We have, yeah, we've sat in the engineering office, we were actually in the engineering office, and sat down and looked at some different things, and Corey did have some brochures that he had brought with him when we were looking at it, and then in discussion, I came up with, in fact, I hope you didn't lose that really hard, sophisticated drawing that I came up with, but, so I put a drawing together and submitted, this is what we're looking at, we're looking for cameras. There were suggestions made by Mr. Lancaster as to, you might want to think about another camera here, just so we're getting all of the, all, you know, the potential angles. And then Greg also had come up with a recent idea of some cameras more inside of the clerk's office and stuff, so we're looking at that aspect of it as well. So, and the panic buttons, again, we'll go to a third party.
Okay.
Good question. The cost that looks like covers the hardware installation, I know some of the EPS report talks about a monthly monitoring service charge of $500 a month, with Widget Company, what do they get for a monthly monitoring?
You know, I did not get that monthly monitoring price from Mr. Lancaster, I do not know that number.
Okay, so that, would that be something that will be a separate contract though? Because good for you to, with that cost to be, right now, this money here, it looks like it's just for that.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a separate contract with that company. So, right now, we have a standing alarm with BBW, we used to have here at City Hall, but the system became non-functional, but we do use a, probably safety, there's a $30 a month service charge for that monitoring. And I know the same company, I want to say they're in the $20 to $30 range, because I know he is at his house.
And then like the panic button, that'd be a separate part of the charge to go through with their company, it was like, yeah, before we agree on that part, we just like to see that in more detail, that it sounds like, what the hardware installation is helping there.
Yeah, is there a cost with the third party, or is that part of the?
There would be a cost. Which is, I think, I said before, we have a standing alarm through here, we get their equipment into that was based on fire alarms as well.
Yep. And as far as the, does American Widget Company, do they, are we under contract with them with any kind of ongoing, what would you call it, service agreement for the other cameras that we use, or did you just install them?
He just installs them, in those instances, those cameras are all, they're all DVD recorded, there's a DVD recorder at each one of the locations, so that if we have an event, we have to go over, we download that DVD, I shouldn't say DVD, it's a hard drive, but we download it and then bring it back here and go through it for the police.
We just do that ourselves?
Yes.
Okay. And we, so we wouldn't need a service contract with American Widget Company, we would just need the service contract with the third party for the panic button?
Right.
And I don't know how you want to handle that, like a not-to-exceed, or do you want to just, you want to bring that back as a separate issue?
We can bring that question back.
We would have to do that regardless of who we went with, is that correct?
Yeah. Right after me.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike or Rich?
Want to, just real quick, what Greg's idea was, is right now, the video cameras are exterior, interior, and just in the general areas except for in council chambers. Council chambers will also have a voice, the capability of also recording voice. And so, what Greg was asking is, is we don't have any cameras in the clerk's office, and so Greg's idea, you know, clerk's maybe engineering was that if there was an event that, and I hadn't had a chance to talk with the police chief yet on this, but if there was an event that the video, the video would be linked to the panic alarm, so that dispatch would know that we had two, we had two, you know, irate people in the clerk's dispatch would know that we had two, we had two, you know, irate people in, in the clerk's office. So that's going to require some extra monitoring or, you know, additional fee to do that. So that way, when law enforcement's en route, they know that they have two people in this particular area, because each panic button will be self-adjusted with a one-stop panic mark, they'll know where the, where, where that panic button was, was released, and it'll be a pre-recorded, you know, just a hostile person or whatever in the clerk's office or in engineering office, whatever we determine we want that panic button to address. And so we were looking at, you know, possibly with video to tie that in with the panic, panic button, so that we know whether it was one person, two person, or dispatch could give a description of the people that, you know, the video tripped.
And those extra cameras that Greg brought up are included in this price? No.
No, none of that has been talked about. It was strictly with me, I said, those discussions need to occur with the, with you as chief to determine whether or not that's not included in this price. If there's, if it's decided to go that way, that would have to come back to council.
If I may, Rich, I, from my point of view, I understand that Mike is trying to explain a lot of the benefits of the program, so I was trying to stand, but from a security point of view, I, I don't think really much more detail should be put out public right now. I hope you understand.
Uh huh.
I would not be talking all placed about this and that, what it can do and what it can't do, it's just not a good idea.
Okay.
I hope.
Then let's, yeah, and I'm going to go with what our chief's recommendation, and we'll just, that'll be internal as far as how we, how you determine where that's, how that's going to work and where that's going to be. Chief makes a good point, and we'll, we'll just focus on the contract with Widget Company.
So can I ask a question? Should we, should we wait until staff has all of the conversation about what they want before we, or should we vote? Because you're going to come back to us.
Just do it as one.
Do you want to wait?
We're not in a big rush here, are we?
I, I would like to make the, personally, I would like to make the commitment to, to get the, to get the ball rolling, and any additional cameras are not going to be that significant a cost, because there's, you know, Alpena Widget is a busy company, I've spent quite a bit of time up on Mackinac Island, and I want to make the commitment to him, if we in fact go that route, so that we can get things starting to go, you know, to, to get the ball rolling, start moving on, installation.
To schedule it, get the material ordered, at least basically what we've been talking about. Any additional that they can just order and get in and put in once they're here.
If it's approved.
I guess I, I'm confused, maybe I misunderstood. So we, we have, we want a system that will let everybody know what's going on and how many people are involved, including the people who are doing.
Okay, what we're not going to discuss is what the security system will do.
Some will do.
We're just going to discuss whether we want to approve these numbers and approve a contract agreement with Mr. Lancaster's company.
Well, it would be nice to know what we're approving, what we're spending our money for.
Well.
What we're looking at is video cameras in our entrances on the exterior of our buildings, just to, just to, similar to what the county has installed in our mirrors, just to monitor coming and going, and then electronic entry system for just using each employee as well as cleaning people.
You're good.
Would have a pass.
You're all set.
Okay.
So the three things we're, we're going to get is an alarm system, a video surveillance system, and a door access control.
Okay.
The details of that will be worked out internally.
Do you have a time, Greg, for what we're going forward tonight, when we start, when will the project start?
I understood that Mr. Lancaster has about a 30-day commitment right now of work that's in front of him, and so it would be, I'm guessing, within the next 45 days.
You ready for motion?
Yeah, and I guess just my, my final comment would be that I don't, I don't have an issue with American Widget Company. They've obviously done quite a bit of work for us. I, I would like to make sure, and I'm sure that Greg and yourself will, that as, if this is approved, that as we progress, we start talking about what we're going to put in, and it becomes something that's more significant cost-wise than what the intent of our approval, then we should probably put a, just put a halt to it.
Well, there won't be anything any more than what you've approved without it coming back, so that isn't going to happen.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? You want a motion? I move that we award the contract for $31,190 to American Widget for the above items. Do you want me to name them? No? Okay.
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
Haas?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Greg. Next up is the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate for a single-family residence to be constructed at 111 East Dunbar.
Logan. In 2011, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, or NEZ, was established covering the vacant city block that used to contain the Thunder Bay Middle School as a tool to promote development, promote the development of homes that fit into the scale of the existing housing stock in the surrounding neighborhood. Prior to that, Thunder Bay Neighborhood Overlay Zone District was created with similar goals. In addition, a policy and rating schedule was established for this NEZ that would extend a potential NEZ request to up to 12 years if, if the proposed home was in performance with the surrounding housing and did not require a variance from the Thunder Bay Neighborhood Overlay District standards. The new house, under construction at 111 East Dunbar, has applied for an NEZ certificate to evade a portion of the new taxes generated from the home prior to completion. The NEZ committee, consisting of planning and development director, building official, a planning commission member, and historic district study committee member, met and reviewed the application along with its architectural compatibility of the home per the approved policy and rating schedule, and determined that the new home qualified for the full 12-year abatement. At this time, staff would request that council approve Resolution 2019-12, granting a 12-year abatement, a 12-year NEZ exemption for the property at 111 East Dunbar.
Adam, does this NEZ ever end?
It will, pretty much, it will end when all housing is constructed. At this point, I don't believe the NEZ has an expiration date, I could be mistaken.
And are you talking about the district, or you're talking about this particular one?
This, I guess I'm talking about that, right now, that square block.
Well, once it's, once it's filled.
Once it's filled. So there's, so that's the end date is when the last block?
Yeah, right now, there's basically one other building.
Or three lots, but I'm going to be assumption it's in common ownership.
Yeah, I've heard that, and that they're looking at those structures, so that would be the last one.
Oh, okay. I just wondered if there was like an expiration date.
No, no, otherwise.
The rezonations don't have something similar, they eventually did expire, but this is a little different in that regard, so when it's filled, it will effectively be the end. Thank you.
Again?
I'm good. I don't have any. I move we approve Resolution 2019-12.
Aye.
Haas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Adam. Just going to stick around for the rezonation of the property at 124 and 128 South First Avenue from OS1 Office Service District to R2 One Family Residence District, first reading ordinance 19446.
All right, as far as background, the property at 128 South First has been utilized for a dentist office and a residence, and I believe it was 2010 when the property in the adjacent single-family home at 124 North First Avenue resembled OS1. Property at 128 North First Avenue is being converted to a, strictly a single-family home, and the dentist office is being removed. The house is now for sale, and the owner has requested, on behalf of his realtor, to rezone the property from OS1 to R2. Due to the, due to the presence of the single-family home at 124 South First Avenue, I did reach out to that property owner and ask if they wanted to be included in the rezon. They indicated they, they did want to be included, as it made logical sense. So as far as zoning issues, as both houses are utilized for single-family homes and are adjacent to a large R2 district, there would not appear to be any negative impact to zoning both properties R2. Future land use map for these properties does show up in the central business district, but at the very edge of the district. As both properties will be utilized for single-family use, and the properties located are adjacent to a large R2 district, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. And at their June 11, 2019, planning commission, meaning the planning commission recommended to approve the rezon request at seven to zero, and staff would request that City Council approve attached ordinance 19-446.
Does that recruit, that requires a first reading and a second reading?
It does.
All right. Would you like to proceed with the first reading?
Yes. This ordinance of the City of Alpena, Michigan, providing that the code of ordinance of the City of Alpena be amended by modifying and revising ordinance number 392 of said code. Be it ordained by the municipal council of the City of Alpena, State of Michigan as follows. The zoning ordinance of the City of Alpena being ordinance number 392, establishing zoning districts, schedule of regulations, and zoning map is hereby amended and revised in the following manner. The zoning classification of the following described parcels are hereby changed from OS1 Office Service District to R2 One Family Residential. It's legally described as 128 South First Avenue, Lot 1, less the northeasterly four foot of Block 7 of Hitchcock's First Addition to the Village Now City, and 124 South First Avenue, which is the lot east, and the northeasterly four foot of Lot 1, Block 7, Hitchcock's First Addition to the Village Now City. These parcels include the properties at 128 and 124 South First Avenue, and the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after being adopted by the municipal council and duly published.
Anyone have any issues or questions they'd like to bring up? Otherwise, we'll address that at our next meeting. Thank you, Adam. Next up is Resolution 2019-13, setting date for hearing of necessity for special assessment project number 124.
Okay. In April, the city received a petition from property owners on Merchant Street, in between Miller Street and Lake Street, asking to install curb and gutter. And so as part of that, one of the first steps is that we had to verify the signatures on the petition, which were all good, excuse me, good. The second, the second step we had to do was to have the assessor certify the frontage, and everything checked out with that. So the next thing is that we have to set a date for a hearing of necessity, which I'm going to put on the agenda for July 15 at 6:00 P.M. Usually those are scheduled at about 30 days.
Okay.
So I guess I just need approval of Resolution 2019-13.
And since I don't think that we, I don't recall ever having done this in terms of, what is, can you briefly describe what is, what that entails, so we know what's going to happen on the 15th? A hearing of necessity, is it what it sounds like?
Basically, what it is, through the special assessment process, it can be property owner initiated, which this one is, or city initiated. What we do is we go through, we've certified, we're all over 51% of the property owners affording that street have signed on to, have signed on in support of having that curb and gutter work done. Basically, what we do is we have to come before the council and have the hearing of necessity, that basically you deem that the improvements requested are necessary, so, and that's, that initiates the process. At that point in time, there is no cost. Cost is not a factor, whether it's a necessary improvement or not. The costs come on down the play, get the next, there's a hearing, a hearing of border review for the special assessment role as follow-up steps in this, but this is basically just, you're giving the blessing to do the project.
Okay. And the project cost is assessed to their, to those individuals?
A portion of the, of the project costs, and I'm going off memory, but I think it's 25% of, of the improvement portion. The past few have been anywhere from $10 to $25 a foot for special assessment.
And then there's another hearing at border review.
There's a, they call it a border review for this particular special assessment, in which if anybody disagrees with the assessment, that's where they have the opportunity. It's about a three or, three to five-month process, depending on how much time, but there's certain 30-day thresholds that we have to maintain throughout this process.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I had to go way back in the files, looking for the last time that something was petitioned, and it was, I think, 2010.
Right before this. Okay.
Okay, I move we adopt Resolution 2019-13.
Second.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Walgura?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss labor negotiations. Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
And Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.